Can I have a motion to return to the board session, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. I guess before we start, I'd like to welcome new board members. Mike Sikorski, Denise Burry, and also the re-elected Dan Duffy on his reelection. So congratulations to everyone. I'm looking forward to a good year with some new faces, new ideas. All right.
I had to change my face, is that what he said?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Only for lucky.
So that brings us to the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no agenda modifications for tonight. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. And that brings us to pride. And I'm going to shut up and let Garrett speak.
All righty. Well, I'm happy to say that this time of the year, there's plenty to cover as far as pride goes. There's so much, I probably will miss a few things, so hopefully Dr. Reichek can back, clean up over there if anything slips through the cracks. So I'll start off by being able to proudly announce my successor of the Board of Ed Student Representative, and that'll be James Pineda. So he'll be taking over fairly shortly, that I think the student body will be in good hands with him. Moving on, the junior class helped out the Claudio Carras show that was last weekend. And the car show brought in about over 80 cars, which is up from last year, and raised $2,500, which last night at the awards ceremony was actually very generously bumped up to 3,000 by Mr. Coppola. And that really goes a long way as far as class fundraising goes, so I'd like to thank him. Now, the awards night ceremony, which I mentioned earlier, took place last night, and I know I felt it was a really, really great night as far as all the seniors being recognized for all their hard work and scholarships. That's another nice thing as part of senior year. If anyone else, I know Mr. Heater and Dr. Reichek were there, and I think they can agree that it was a really nice night.
Absolutely.
Varsity Club on Tuesday put on a blood drive at FDR, and once again, we beat the number of donations we got from our previous blood drive. We had over 95 donations. Most high schools, from what they said, from the people running it, bring in about 25 donations. So I'm happy to say that I was able to help be part of something like that. Now, today was the Spanish play, and I have to say it was probably my favorite one yet, the French in the Spanish class.
It was great. It was really good.
They incorporated singing and dancing into it, which was really nice seeing some of our theater kids, which you see in their musicals and plays, perform. They brought into the Spanish play, and I really think it was something special. Then, on the athletic side of things, Jeffrey Peters won the Section 9 golf title, which is something I can say is extremely competitive, being someone else that also can meet some sectionals in another facet, not golf, but to win the section is really a huge accomplishment. Now, our singles boy tennis came in third in the state. Our boys and girls baseball teams both rounded out their seasons with really outstanding records. And I'm proud to announce our boys track and field team won our first ever Mahal championship. So I want to give a special thank you to all the taxpayers out there for really helping us get this facility together. We're happy to bring home the title to Hyde Park. And our girls track and field team is set to beat their previous record of last year of the most number of points they scored, coming in second in the league, which just in a few years, coming in from one of the last place teams in the league to tie for second is a huge accomplishment for them as well.
Wow. I had a couple that I wanted to add. I want to thank the HPTA for the fundraiser they had on the night of the vote. They brought in enough money from the ice cream social book sales swap and raffle to pay for one full scholarship. So it was great to see the teachers out there, and one of the best parts about that is some of the teachers get to see older students that they had when they were younger students, and they beeline it up and give them a bear hug as they come in. But that's great that they raised the scholarship money. We had a middle school student, Miranda Ramirez, in her health class with Jody Nartonicola. She entered an art contest for an anti-smoking tobacco poster contest, and she received a $200 gift card for her first place entry, and the teacher also receives a $50 gift card for that. I attended the Scholar-Athlete Breakfast. That was Riley and Jenna, Jenna Cicado and Riley, Riley's last name.
Robinson.
Robinson, thank you. And so it was nice to see our Scholar-Athletes being honored. And other than that, I think you have covered it all, Garrett. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, the Spanish play was.
Well, I just mentioned the other concerts.
Oh, concerts.
Violet Avenue, North Park, Ralph R. Smith, and FDR. So it was a full two weeks, in the last two weeks. And they were all good, and I'm really pleased and proud of the students and the teachers for the music and the quality of the music and the participation, because when you see an orchestra at the middle school, you have to turn your head to see them on the stage because they fill the whole, whole stage. And the elementary schools are getting more and more involved. I think strings is an indication of where your music program is, because those are hard, it's sometimes a hard sell to get people to, and it's hard for the parents, frankly. So the concerts were exceptional, and I can't say enough about them. And the Spanish play was.
I'd like to mention a few things. Garrett is kind of modest about some of the accomplishments of the team because he left his name off. I was at the Mahal sectional competition, and strange enough, there was Garrett on the starting post on the first event, 3,200, 3,200? Finished first.
That's right.
After having gotten up, I understand, at 4:30 in the morning to travel from a prior event to run that day.
Yes.
It's hard to believe anybody could run any distance after being up at 4:30 in the morning. So an exceptional accomplishment for that. He's also, his name popped up more than once yesterday at the Senior Recognition Awards Night, including the announcement of an awarding of a full national, what is it, the ROTC Scholarship to Delaware University. And one of our other students, and I missed his name, Garrett, you can fill it in, was recognized for the fact that he had been appointed to the U.S. Naval Academy also with the full scholarship.
Alex Basikis.
Yes, Alex Basikis was appointed to the U.S. Naval Academy. So that's a huge accomplishment for him. And for FDR as a whole, at Hyde Park community, to have someone going to such a prestigious and honorable institution like that.
And again, it's not the first, but it is a very exceptional appointment. We've had several students along the way that have received appointments and some amazing accomplishments. I know one who went to the Military Academy, continued his studies after graduating from West Point, and actually earned his medical degree as a brain surgeon, and has worked, served, three service, three tours of duty in Afghanistan, and has completed his 20 years and is now retiring, and going to be living in Albany. Unfortunately, he's not coming back to Dutchess County, but I get to see him quite often because his mother-in-law lives across the street from me. So it's an amazing accomplishment. Congratulations, Garrett, for all you've done all year long. Garrett is an exceptional student in terms of what he does for so many activities that I think he's got a clone that attends classes for him, because there's no way he could be at all the activities he's in and also show up at class. So we'll figure it out, yeah. Congratulations, Garrett.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody else have any thing to go? So we'll move right. You have anything for your student attendance report?
Yeah, I don't know, the mics are a little, we'll share a mic tonight. I want to thank the board for their support to send a bus to the Touch a Truck event. The Hyde Park Rotary hosted a Touch a Truck event this past weekend, and it came up, should we send a school bus? And we decided that yes, because there's a lot of preschoolers, that it may be really welcoming for them to, you know, get on a bus and explore the bus. Well, I didn't get to attend the vote, the event, even though I am a Rotarian, but by all accounts, the bus was one of the biggest hits of the Touch a Truck event. And Kiefer Anderson, one of our bus drivers, he also made it. He just was the perfect driver to go. He was very engaging. We thought it was just going to be attractive to the real little kids, but even the big kids thought it was a thrill to get on a bus that wasn't taking them to school and get to honk the horn. And so we weren't sure if, you know, it was going to be something that was a valuable experience for the community, but it turned out that the bus was a big hit at the Touch a Truck. So I want to thank them for that support. And just a reminder that there is no school tomorrow, it's one of the Give Back Days. You can sleep in, Garrett.
Fantastic.
As we share the mic here. That moves us on to our first presentation. Coherence Planning.
Yeah, so at this time, I'd like to introduce Jonathan Costa. Jonathan worked with our district leadership team all this year, and we spent an entire year looking at how do we want to organize ourselves in moving forward on the academic front and on a philosophical front as well, so that as we plan budgets, buildings, construction, our programs, what is going to be the foundation of where we're going? So the group collectively worked on this presentation, and we did spend pretty much the entire year working on this. I would like if one of the first slides is going to be the people that were on the team. And there are a number of people here, so if you could stand up if you're on the team. We've got Mary Ann, Mary Beth, Jen, Eric, Aviva, Roger, Jo Marie, Barbara Sweet, Nate Craig, David Ray, Perry, and Danielle. So did I miss anybody? Melissa, sorry, I didn't see you. So I did just want to have this visual, that the people who actually worked on this committee and on this team, a good number of them are here. Certainly not all of them, but enough. So I'd like to thank them for showing up tonight to represent this whole process. So at this point, we'll turn it over to our fearless leader, Jonathan, who joined us for this year.
Thank you, Greer. So this is the abbreviated Reader's Digest version. There's a 48-page full report that if you would like to tackle, you're welcome to, but this is really just sort of an overview of what we did and why we did it and how we did it. And it really started just about a year ago when Greer and Doug, and I think there were some, and Aviva, it came to a session that I had done for a group of districts in the Boses area to present an alternative model to traditional strategic planning. And as a result of that, the Hyde Park community decided to pursue it, and this is the result of it. And really, it seems to be self-evident, but the goal of this planning process was to try to create an environment where we can assure that every Hyde Park student is leaving your district ready for life learning and work beyond school. And it seems straightforward, but a lot has happened and is happening that changed the way we think about what we need to do to properly prepare children for the world in which they will, they will live and work, because the world is changing rapidly and the requirements for decent preparation for success change as well. And one of the things that we found as we went through the process was that the work that Hyde Park had done in recent years really was very solid foundation-wise. The mission that you have behind you on your wall and the vision for the district still spoke to those needs, and one of the results of the process that the group tackled was, do we need to rethink these foundational documents? And it was pretty unanimous that we did not, that the foundational focus was there. But the challenge is, even with this sense of purpose, the educational environment has been anything but supportive of an ability to focus on what matters. Especially well-meaning legislation from both Washington and Albany have created a challenge to help create the structures that are capable of adjusting to the needs of students in the 21st century. So the whole purpose of this planning process was to readjust the balance of work done from feeling like we're doing things just to comply with what others are telling us to do, to create a structure that reflects what the people of Hyde Park want for their students and as a way to help prepare their children for the future. So what we embarked upon was a process to try to find work that met the needs of students, met the needs of the community of Hyde Park, while at the same time, taking care of the most important things that are found in national and state standards, so that you're really getting the best of both worlds, the things that you have to do with the things that you want to do. Hyde Park is part of the Learn 21 community, which has a focus, and the laser is going to eat this beam, so I can't do it, but you can see the critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and communication as four foundational skills for appropriate preparation for life learning and work beyond school. And as part of the process, the group that was assembled agreed that those four foundational skills were the most important. And we then set about to look at all of the different structures and processes that build work in a public school environment. So the way you lead, the goals for learning you have for students, the way you measure and assess them, the way you create learning environments to teach to them, the way you create budgets to support it, the policies and regs you use to guide the work of the district, and how you involve the community in that process. So if it was done well, we agreed at the beginning, that at the end, you'd have these four things. You'd have a district that agreed on what mattered most in terms of student learning. You'd build an instructional culture dedicated to creating that for all students in Hyde Park, that you would measure and assess it so that you had an idea of how well you've done to prepare kids to get those four foundational skills, and that you would align the systems and structures to do that over time. And this is how this process is a little different from traditional strategic planning. It's like, it's backwards design. We started with this. This is what we wanted to create, and the process was designed to determine where the gaps were between these four things and the current work being done in the district. Because it's critical that we recognize, and you could see it throughout the planning process, that there are parts of all of these things that are happening right now in Hyde Park. You know, there is wonderful instruction happening. There is, there are teachers that are focused on creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. But it's not all the time, across the board, K through 12, different schools have different interpretations, some have different measurements. So it's really about where are the gaps between this being a true K-12 system dedicated to those four goals and piecing together the work that's already being done with work that needs to be done, so that we can assure that every student, like Garrett, and the fine students that were on the committee. I mean, we had three wonderful students that participated with us.
Nate's here, come on up, Nate.
Come on up.
Nate's coming up. I also want to say Kelly Marshall is here. She was hiding. Kelly Marshall, one of our parent reps. So when I introduce everybody, I don't know, I didn't see you sitting there, Kelly, thanks for coming. Nate, the three students on the committee were Nate Craig, Kayla O'Grady, and Joey Colazo. So Nate is going to speak a little bit about, from a student perspective, the process.
It was really nice, like, getting involved in how our school would operate, because like, a lot of times, as a student, you may not have the opportunity to have a say in how your school runs, you know, it's usually like Board of Education or something. But it was just nice. And I thought the four Cs, like, part of the strategic coherence plan, that was, I thought that was a good foundation, because a couple days ago, Ms. Schiffer, Zach Schiffer's mom, came into one of our classes, and she talked about how she doesn't necessarily use the skill, like, the content knowledge that she learned in school, but she uses, like, one of the four Cs, critical thinking, in her field, like, at IBM. And, you know, that might be just because she had good teachers who helped her along, but it's really important that, you know, every student gets a chance to have all those four Cs, you know, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. So it was just, it was nice being able to be part of this.
Thank you, Nate.
My interaction with students in Hyde Park are the three young people that were on this committee and Garrett from tonight. So whatever you're doing in Hyde Park, it's going pretty well. This is just designed to make it better. So we committed to those principles of coherence. We did the data scan. That went on for about eight weeks, and that data scan was really used to determine the gaps between where the district is and where the district wanted to be. We had a retreat in December, right here in this room, where all of the groups that had gone out and done the data scan came back and reported. And it was in that session that we identified the gaps for planning. And we then spent the most, the rest of the spring, creating plans to prioritize the work that needed to be done and scale it so it could happen over, over the next several years. And it is primarily the work of aligning instruction and assessment with those four Cs. And it's a lot of work, and one of the mechanisms that the group decided on was to first tackle critical thinking as the primary work going forward, and then to add the others as, as we went. And, you know, I'm not sure if you can read it from there, but we talked about shifts in instruction that allow for the learning of content knowledge within the context of the four Cs. So we use this example of a lesson taught to learn about the events of the Boston massacre in the American Revolution. And as a former history teacher, I shamefully admitted that I used to give the assignment on the left frequently. You know, just read the book, answer the questions, we'll talk about it in class. What does it look like in a digital learning environment when you use the four Cs to get at the same content knowledge? We still want kids to know about the American Revolution, but if we do it in a way that has them use resources to find information, to synthesize that information, to work together with their peers, to form opinions, make arguments based on evidence, and then defend those arguments in front of others, they are still learning the content, but they are also developing those critical skills at the same time. And how are we giving teachers feedback on how well they are creating those classrooms where kids can learn that information? This is the, one of the examples of the instructional rubric we use to give teachers feedback in Hyde Park. And we note that there are many, many indicators, but just as some skills are more important than others, some strategies are more important than others. So how do we focus on the most critical things in classroom instruction to give teachers feedback so they can be more successful at helping students be more successful? And the biggest piece of work that we identified was the challenge of coming to consensus as a community on what success looks like in these areas. One of the challenges of higher order thinking as displayed in the classroom is that adults need to spend time agreeing on what it looks like when it's done well. Because one of the challenges is many, we have different interpretations of what good critical thinking looks like. And we need to be on the same page so we can give students consistent feedback on that. It's easy to test for knowledge of the 50 capitals. It's harder to test for an analysis of why a place became a capital. What does that look like if it's done well? So coming to grips with how we measure our success in the four Cs and incorporate that into the feedback we give to students, talk about that as accountability measures for boards and policymakers. It's more than about, it's more than just a Regents test. It's more than just an SAT score. It's about how they can work successfully to incorporate those foundational skills. And those tests, by the way, are shifting to try to reflect more of that over time. So you're sort of merging the two, the two trends together. We did our best, oh, why did that blurt them out? We did our best to summarize about 15 pages worth of tasks listed into a one-slide, seven-bullet list, but essentially, what we're going to be doing, what you folks are going to be working on over the next six to 12 months are really helping everyone in the community understand the plan, why it looks the way it does, what the rationale is, and what they can, what everyone can expect to see from it. There's a two-page executive summary at the start of the plan, if you don't feel like reading all 48 pages. Really helping everyone understand what those four Cs are. They are a beautiful extension of your existing mission, but they are the meat of what we're trying to accomplish. Building an even greater depth of understanding of what critical thinking looks like when students do it well, grades four, eight, and 12, so you have that continuum all the way through. And then doing an even more extensive inventory of existing practice. Where are the best practices currently in the district that are doing this well? And how can we learn from them and spread the good practice from within the district that's already happening throughout? that's already happening throughout the rest of the district? Improve those systems alignment. That's really the board and rears' job, to be sure that things, a new building, how is it aligned to help support what kids are trying to do? How do budgets support these goals? Those systems alignment. And then the critical thing really is creating time for in-depth instructional practice around critical thinking. Adults need time to work together to do this work. They need time to be with kids, to give them feedback on this work. Time is probably the most, the most critical asset in, in moving this work forward. And this last slide is for your most famous resident. You know, we, we can't do it for kids, but we can prepare them for what they are going to, for a world that they are going to enter. You know, the knowledge they will need will change, but we know what skills they will need to deal with a world that changes essentially relentlessly. And as part of the Ed Leader 21 Network, you are in a community of districts across the country that are working to build evidence of four Cs, positive instructional practice, good assessments. You have that resource network that you're already a part of, which is really an important benefit. And it gives your mission and your vision a focus. And the idea is to do a few things, the most important things, as well as they can be done, so as many students as possible leave your schools prepared for life learning and work beyond school. That's what we did.
Thank you. And before we open it up to questions, and thank you so much, Jonathan, and for all the members of the committee that were here. You know, one of the big things that's going to be a shift for us on the instructional front, and something that we acknowledge is when, when you think about that slide of the compliance weighing us down, we can't do this under the compliance boulder. So in order to move forward, we have to do this by taking stuff off the plate for our teachers. And we have to take it off the plate for them. And at the same time, we have to build in more autonomy for teachers to design around the four Cs. So the shift that we're going to see is greater teacher autonomy with the tools that they have, and really working to say, how can we take some of the stuff off of the plate? So it's going to be more of a shift that should reflect that. If you look at the plan, the first part of the plan is really just giving our teachers and our community a lot of times, a lot of time in the next year to just say, what does critical thinking look like? And we do have the rubrics that, you know, part of being that, being in that consortium, we, we have rubrics that say, what does critical thinking look like in the grade three, four band, the seven, eight band, and the...
Nine, 12.
Nine, 12 band, or 10, 11, whichever one it was, whichever two. We did an exercise with the administrative team very recently, so that we're practicing for ourselves what it looks like. We all have SMART goals, very sophisticated SMART goals, all administrators have too. And at the last administrator's meeting, we took the rubric, the high school rubric for critical thinking, and we said, take your goals and look at the critical thinking rubric. And what pieces, how, how do you rate on the critical thinking rubric? Where do you hit some of the higher levels? So it was just an interesting exercise. Some of what we want to engage in next year is have teachers look at current practices and just, just look at the critical thinking rubric and their current practices, and just have time to look at it. Time to decide what in the compliance area can come off the plate. How can we free teachers up to engage in this type of a shift and look at critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and communication?
And we have very good data over time that by focusing on critical thinking in a rigorous application, there are positive collateral improvement benefits in testing in other academic areas because it's a foundational skill that leads to better performance in a variety of different disciplines. And the, the thing about taking stuff off the plate, too, I mean, there is, that sound you hear is the pendulum swinging back, right? ESSA was reauthorized by Congress. It backs off the mandates and requirements from No Child Left Behind, and then New York State's Race to the Top waiver. So if anything, there is a, a sense of movement back from the brink of all of the stuff that was laid on top of public schools over the last five years. So there's some hope that there will be the space for public schools in New York to make some decisions about what they want to do to best meet the needs of their students. And I think you're going to see an opportunity over the next few years to really pursue more of what you value rather than what Albany has directed you to value. So, I mean, I think there's, that's a positive, that's a positive move. And this plan sort of anticipated that to some degree because we started it before ESSA was passed. So you sort of, you sort of got the jump on what that might look like if it actually comes to pass.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board?
Where can the full report be found?
It's on the agenda. It's, it's on the board agenda tonight, and that is open to the public. And we will also, after we've had the board meeting tonight, we'll put a special link to it on the, on the homepage. But right now, the whole 48-page document is, if you wanted to get it tonight, if anybody wants to read it tonight, they can actually go to the Board of Education section, click on tonight's agenda. And where you get to coherence planning, you'll see the PowerPoint as well as a link to the whole document. And tomorrow, we'll put the documents up as a link on the homepage.
Any others? I guess I have a question. Will this be a focus of professional development? Will there be other, like, committee meetings? How, how is this whole thing going to work?
Yeah. So, good question. Yes, it will be 100% all professional development, with the exception of some things that, you know, we might have to do for, for very specific things, like, you know, the new...
Bloodborne pathogens.
Yeah. Bloodborne pathogens, the, the new E S L, E L L, E N L, they keep changing it, regulations. But other than that, from here on in, every piece of professional development, this will be the foundation. Starting even with our administrative team, we will engage in this work. How we're going to organize it is we still want a community and a team that is representative of community members and parents. Because as we move forward with initiatives in the district, this will be the foundation. So if we're looking at a capital project because we need to redesign things that involve our science labs, this has to be the foundation. What, what, what in critical thinking, communication, collaboration, what does that mean for how a science lab should, or a STEAM center, or maker spaces, all the things you're reading about in 21st century? How do you design your space to support this type of an instructional environment? How do we organize our budget where it's professional development to shift that? We can pretty confidently do that. So we envision that we'll still have one larger committee that has representation, but it will be some breakout session. There's a lot of people that are ready to start talking about our building condition survey and, and how we're going to organize ourselves moving forward to address some of the work. We want this committee, and we'll welcome new people, where people drop off, to have this as the foundation. So there won't be, ideally, there shouldn't be any committee in the district that isn't centered in this work, so that we're all working off one foundation. So we envision having a series of meetings of the full team, and then the breakout for facilities, or the breakout for the budget. But instead of having a budget input group that has, is not committed to this work, that won't exist. Instead of having a facility steering committee that is not committed to this work, it can't exist. So all new committees will have to be, use this as our springboard.
Okay. The reason I ask is there aren't that many professional development days. I could get myself in trouble by saying, you know, there was unused snow days that probably could have been used, but I won't say that in public, anyway.
He just mumbled that.
I'm concerned that if it's stretched out, it'll lose momentum unless it, it's a daily thing and is, like, department meeting than the schools, and there's interaction. And, and how do you get that interaction between one school and what they do, and another school, and what, what they might be doing? So...
And that tight link is, that is exactly part of the plan. That will be part of all of the faculty meetings, all of the department meetings. So we, in, in addition to the days, which are far and few in between, the principals will be, are onboard, and that becomes the foundation for faculty meetings. There's a lot of excitement around it already. You know, at the high school level, they're looking at the writing program, which was all based on critical thinking. So they're like, wow, this is a great springboard. So we had representation at all levels on the committee. We've been rolling this out little by little on our administrative team. But faculty meetings, grade-level meetings, we think, we actually think our preliminary look at this, we think there's going to be a lot of excitement and a lot of momentum that will build upon itself. We think that greater teacher autonomy will have a significant shift in buy-in and even creativity on the, on lesson planning part. So if you look at the very end of the 48-page document, you will see the nuts and bolts of where we're going to formally roll it out. And then, yeah, I mean, it, it's a leap of faith. You know, there's some part of it that's a leap of faith. If we don't have the entire administrative team onboard, then you, you move a little slowly or a little dysfunctionally. But right now, we have everybody onboard, so...
And Doug, you, you hit on the primary need for the reason for focus. You know, it's so hard to change anything.
That's for sure.
And if you try to change 100 things and you don't have time to do one thing, you're just, everyone's working really hard, but you're never really getting anywhere. So the idea for this was if you can take the available resources, find some additional ones, but tie it to a thing, a thing that matters, you at least have a chance of building a coherent improvement plan. And that's really what this is about. The, the name coherence is just how do the pieces fit together to support something that's important?
Okay. I guess I see it, the high school, it's one building, everybody's in the same place. In the middle school, everybody's in the same place. But we have four elementary schools who might be slightly different unless they were all together. I was just wondering how that was going to work.
And it's a challenge, and that's one of the things you have to do. Because if, if you don't do that, you don't have a school system. You have a, an organization that's got five independent things. Unfortunately, they're sending things from one place to the other, and they need to build on one another. So you have to have that coherent conversation pre-K to 12.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if we move on to the...
Thank you, Greg.
Oh, yeah. Jonathan, thank you. I'm sorry.
And thank you, we had, to everybody who is on the committee. I mean, you deserve a round of applause. This is hard work, and we've got a big journey ahead of us. One of our other members came in, Carrie Palermo. So we recognize everybody who had come in before, so welcome, and thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jonathan. All right. You can see, not that I'm in a hurry, I'm sorry. So, district vote results. Good reading.
Yes.
Good stuff.
Very good stuff.
You want me to go through that, or I might as well?
Is it, can we put it on the screen? Is it just on the agenda, or do we have a slide?
It's just on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It's just on the agenda, yeah. So, first of all, from all of us on the board, thank you. I, I think most of the people here that are connected with the school know how much work goes into creating a budget, and especially in these financial times. And much of the credit goes to Linda down there. And I think the, the community supported us so that this vote was, I wouldn't say expected, but certainly, my pen is falling apart, sorry. But anyway, Proposition 1 is for the record. It passed. 1313 votes for and 514 against. Purchase of the school buses, yes, were 1290, and no, were 535. And the Proposition 3, establishing the Fund Capital Reserve, also passed, 1294 to 527. And we've already introduced the new members, Denise Berry and Michael Zagorski, and welcome Dan back. So, all in all, it was a, it was a good night. It was a concert that night. It was a vote that night. It was good stuff. Okay. You want to, any, you want to make any comment on, on the, the budget vote?
No, just, we really want to thank everybody who came out and, and voted. Doug and I, and Linda and Cora go to classrooms, Mrs. Mullins' classrooms each year, and we talk about the importance of getting out to vote. And I'd really, Mary Ann's here today. I'd really like to thank Mary Ann Mullins because not only is it a great opportunity for us to come into the classrooms, and without your invitation, we wouldn't be there, but in the years that Mary Ann has invited us to come to talk to the students about the vote, we have seen the student turnout at the polls to grow exponentially. And not only are they the students that are 18 at our schools, we are seeing the students who either come home from college because they're attending places close enough, or they're still in the area working, or they're finished for the semester. But I can't tell you how many students I see at the poll who are graduates. So our 18-year-olds are coming out, our recent graduates are coming out. And when you look at a total number of, you know, what is it, 1,900 people showing up at the polls in a, in a district that has 18,000 registered voters, every one of those students counts tremendously. So I know I saw many, many of our students out at the polls. So I want to thank Mrs. Mullins for getting us in there. And I think it is definitely getting our young students engaged in their civic right to vote and getting involved is tremendous. So I think that, that's all I have to say. I'm just thrilled to see the young voters coming out. And thank you to everybody else who came out, and...
Okay.
Doug, I'd like to just make a comment. I won't even try to her first name, but Ms. Henderson Murphy, who also ran unsuccessfully, just want to, just a, a point of appreciation for someone who's, you know, interested in the board.
Yes.
And, you know, I think that it was great. We had, we had three openings on the board, and we had four, four candidates, and I think that's, that's a good thing, and I think it should be recognized, that...
Absolutely, absolutely.
People putting themselves out, and, you know, we need more people who want to be sitting in these seats.
And, and if she's watching, I ran three times before I got elected, so, you know...
Yeah. But, you know, just thank you for her interest in anyone else.
Now you can't get rid of me, but...
And it won't be long, we'll be looking for candidates again.
Yes. And there's one sitting right in the back there. There we got him. Okay. At this time, I have a motion for public participation, please.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. If anybody would like to address the board, if you could step to the mic, that would be well, so everybody in the audience and out in the community can hear you. We have any takers tonight? No? There are all these people, nobody... Barbara, go ahead.
I guess I got to identify myself. Barbara Sweet, 6 Coby Road, Hyde Park. And our road is going to be paved this year. But what I wanted to do is say thank you to all the board members for allowing a student to serve on the board. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Garrett. I think you've done a great job. You've got your feet wet, and maybe you've got a little idea of what it is to help out the community and serve.
Well, it's been a pleasure to be here.
So I wanted to just thank everyone on the school board for allowing this to happen. And in turn, Garrett, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to? May I have a motion to exit public participation?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Well, Barbara, yes, Garrett has left a big impression and big shoes to fill. I would like to, again, say that Perry is the one that brought this up. And we had thought about it before individually, probably, but until he brought up and said, you know, why don't we do this? They do it in Red Hawk. So credit where credit's due, yeah.
But also, we have to thank the community, because it doesn't happen without a vote. The community actually had to approve it.
Yes, they did.
And they did overwhelmingly, because it would have been, you know, the seven of us could have agreed to do it, and if the community said no, it wouldn't have happened. So we have to thank the community as well for having the foresight.
That's true.
And again, it passed by a substantial margin, as I recall.
Yes, it did. Yeah. Oh, all right. So, let me just move down here. There's nothing on new for board discussion. There's no unfinished business that I know of. That brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for 11.1, action on the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? There was a number of tenure appointments. As long as we're talking about tenure, we had a roomful next door, and everybody seemed to enjoy the ice cream cake, so I hope that's a tradition that keeps on going for the next few years, at least.
We could read off their names and have them...
Sure. You want to...
So, since we're, before we vote on the consent agenda, let's read off the names of the people who are here to celebrate their tenure. So on the administrative tenure, we have Daniel Cowan, Eric Shaw. You can stand up. Come on. Daniel Cowan, Eric Shaw, Heather Dennis, Joanna Murphy. And the teacher tenure area, if you could please stand up. Lydia Reinig, Kelly Gold, Jennifer Hickey, Dawn Holt, Andrea Zalatas, Justin Demming, Allison Nasta, Steve Nielsen, Emily Turk, Ashley Beach, and Nancy Hubner. And for teaching assistants tenure appointments, Bernadette Avelllo, Dale Mack, Matthew Newsey, and Marion Manning. I know Marion's...
We have a couple retirements, too. One of note is the cook at Violet Avenue that I talk to every Friday, Shirley. And she, she is counting the day. She can tell you how many days, how many hours, how many minutes are left. She'd be missed, though. She runs a tight ship down there. And the other one was what? Yeah, that was Cheryl.
They're both Cheryl.
Yeah. And the cook, the other...
Is the secretary of high school.
Secretary at high school. Okay. So we haven't had a vote, so all in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Okay. Can I have a motion for special education placement, sweet?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption as presented to us.
Thank you. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you very much. I have a motion for the internal audit report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
So the audit committee, this year, we decided to, we actually asked the internal auditor to study the, usually we think of audits, you think of financial systems, and we decided that, as people may be aware, there were some things in the local media about school districts having issues with grading systems. So we decided that we should actually audit our grading system and our student record system and be, you know, find out. And we learned a lot, you know, and the audit, an audit's not to play gotcha, but rather to find where you may have material weaknesses and actually get them fixed. And we discovered quite a few things with our audit system that we'll actually talk about, I guess, when we do the corrective action plan. But some things were definitely learned. It was a worthwhile exercise, and I'm glad, actually, we did it, because, again, you know, we have to think, in my encouragement, if I, when I move off the board with the audit committee, is, you know, think broader than just finances. There's other things to look at. When you talk about controls and the way things need to be done, this was definitely a valuable exercise.
Yeah. And I'd like to just reinforce the thing. There were no errors in the way, in the actual data and everything, but there were potential...
There were weaknesses, though.
There were potential weaknesses.
Yeah, that have been closed up, and we'll talk about them in the corrective action plan, so.
Okay. All in favor of that? Oppose? Thank you. So now we have the correction action plan.
I'll move that as well. So as a result of the audit, there were a couple of recommendations that were made. And I'll actually just highlight them quickly, because I think it's important, if we're going to discuss them in public, that people don't know what we're talking about. So a couple of the issues that were found with the grading system. For example, they asked that, you know, we have a grading policy, but we didn't have a, you know, we needed more detail that explains the system, system access, grade changes, and audit log and monitoring. So the district's going to recommend to the board that we'll adopt a grading policy that was provided by the internal auditors that will address those issues. We talked about, let's see, there was a recommendation concerning computer permissions, regarding log-on permissions for substitutes. The auditors found that the substitute teachers were given login information and passwords to the teacher in order, just so they could do attendance. And, you know, these are the types of things that, you know, we have to look at and say, well, wait a minute. Attendance is one function, grades are really another, and we needed to tighten up, you know, the controls. So we're going to be pursuing, providing limited access to student, the student management system, so that substitute teachers may only view and enter data on the attendance module and not go anywhere near the grades. And then we did a review of permission, you know, have an administrator review periodically permissions to the grading system to ensure, so the assistant superintendent of instruction is going to periodically review the grading system permissions to ensure that the access assigned to, you know, anybody that's on the system is assigned appropriately. We talked about passwords, that they should be changed at least every 90 days, so that will happen now. An important one, and this is where a teacher in another district in Dutchess County got into trouble, as a matter of fact, was, had charges preferred against them and lost their employment for changing grades. And that's where kind of I started to think about this, to see what kind of controls we have. So, you know, there has to be some kind of procedure or permissions granted for changing dates. So there's a lockout date for entering grades. And right now, what happens is a teacher can just send a note to the technology department to gain back access to the system to make the changes, but it's not approved by the administrator. So we recommended, the auditor recommended that a principal must approve access before they can re-access the grade system. And that will now go into effect immediately, or as of July 1st. And that will ensure that any grade changes are, you know, that there's a reason behind them and that they're legitimate. And then finally, also, audit logs, you know, that obviously, any computer system has audit logs to see who's been doing what, so that we'll be able to check those and review them more carefully, especially in light of the fact that, you know, that'll look for people that have been maybe excessively entering or changing grades after the lockout period to ensure that that's, you know, legitimately done. Yeah, and that was pretty much it. So, you know, the audit committee recommends, and I thank Linda and Cora for, you know, working together to develop the corrective actions, so the audit committee recommends its approval.
Okay, Kevin, well, just for form, we need a second before we vote. So, thank you.
Sorry about that. Tear right into it.
All right. I think we've had a discussion, so all in favor?
Good. You're not going to make me discuss it again? Okay.
Oppose? Thank you.
Just for the record, Kevin, could you repeat?
Yeah.
You made them.
If you don't mind.
That brings us to 12.4, the inner municipal agreement for the town of Hyde Park. That would be for the SROs.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 12.5, the guidance plan.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any discussion? I have to say, because I've never actually looked at it before, I actually read that whole thing, and it was really interesting. You know? The, I wouldn't make a comment, in the first, yeah, first or second paragraph, they described courageous programs. You know, I just thought the word courageous was like a little different. So, all in favor? Oppose? No. Also, the special ed, also had a plan. Can I have a motion for 12.6?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? Also an interesting document. A lot goes on in special ed. It's really, I mean, I went to one special ed meeting and I said, wow, this is, first of all the terminology that I don't hear very often, and second, how thorough.
Count on the fact, if we went back to another meeting, the terminology's already changed. They live by the philosophy, if they know where it's at, move it.
All right. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. This is one of our many side agreements. I have a 12.7, agreement for behavioral services.
So moved. Second.
That would be at the Anderson Center, by the way. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 12.8, agreement for special education services.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? That's for the Deveraux Foundation, by the way. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Well, we're back to our favorite part. May I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? If anybody would like to address the board again, please step up to the mic. Well, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
That's got to be your first in a while. It'll take us both times.
Well, no, we had Barbara.
No, we had Barbara. We had one. We had one.
I tried. I'm sorry, Barbara.
Yeah. Board subcommittee meetings, we had a policy meeting, and we talked about the code of conduct and certain parts of it. Of course, we had the audit meeting, I think that was before last meeting, anyway. Any other, any other, did Dutchess County?
Dutchess County School Board Association, we had our monthly meeting, spent the bulk of the meeting just discussing whatever everyone's budget was. And I have to admit, I think that it was, pretty much everybody was in the same situation. I mean, very, very small increases, very tight budgets. Some actually were in a position where they had no increase, just because of the way the numbers work out. It gets, it gets even trickier to, when you start looking, when the numbers get to be small percentages.
They have to fix, they have to fix, you know, if you have a negative number, you have to have a 60 percent.
Yeah, yeah. There was...
Yeah. Who comes up with this stuff?
Yeah.
You know, so it's...
Politicians.
Yes. That's us, by the way.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
It's you, Doug. No, no, no.
Jeff.
Really glad it hurt somebody, don't you?
Well, were you elected? Come on.
I was elected, but I didn't, I don't get paid for it. I feel good about what I do.
Okay. Um...
No offense, because I love my town board. Just, we're talking about the wider, you know, state, et cetera.
Yeah.
Don't feel abused, Dave. I know. I know.
He doesn't, they don't get paid very much either. They might as well be working for free.
15.2, upcoming meetings, Thursday, June 9th, 7 o'clock, right here in this room, will be the next Board of Education meeting, and that's the only, well, I would say, before that, June 1st, for anybody out there that goes to Music in the Parks, June 1st will be the middle school, high school production. So hopefully, it doesn't rain, although, or as...
And if it doesn't, hopefully, it's not as warm as it is tonight.
Well, if you're outside, it'll be, it'll be okay, I think. All right.
Doug, I would also add that the Dutchess County School Board Association will be having their annual meeting and dinner on June 2nd.
Okay.
And that's going to be at the district office, the City of Poughkeepsie School District, 6:00 PM. Board members are welcome. I think they are looking for an RSVP, and I can get you that number if necessary. We're having Chris Hamel, who is one of the leading SROs in the county, has been working in the Spackenkill School District for many years. He's a, works for the Town of Poughkeepsie Police Department, does the training also for the SRO program, is going to be the guest speaker. So give a little more information, maybe on a broader topic of SRO and the position they play in the districts.
A valid topic for these days.
Yeah, yeah. Good. And it's always a good dinner.
Well, well, yes, Poughkeepsie. I'm sorry. No, I couldn't resist that. But there is no need for another executive session, so may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? And considering the number of people, I think we did real good tonight.